allegiance to the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their flag for which it stands, one nation under God, with no flaws of liberty and justice for all. Welcome to all. Glad to see you tonight. Um, got all members minus Justin Manneke present. Do we have a form? Uh, first order would be approval of the agenda as distributed.
I would like to add board communication. If we could just do it for a discussion point, we just go down in the reports here.
Um, board dis- board communication?
Just a discussion.
Good. Uh, under reports. There we go. So at the end of the meeting, you love and dot all.
Yeah.
Does that be fine?
Just a couple of discussion points.
Good. Any other changes?
Move to approve as amended.
Good. Motion to approve. Uh, approval of the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Uh, three dot O consent agenda. Under consent agenda, we would have minutes from the regular meeting, April fifteenth. Finance checks and wires, payroll checks and direct deposits.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any public comments tonight? Good. We'll move to five dot O, uh, student staff and constituent reports, um, five dot one, high school student council.
Hi, I'm Christian Olson.
So we're here to tell you what we've done over the year and some other stuff recently. So we had our fall on spring summit. We had our blood drive as well. And then we did some fundraising with Canny Graham's teacher appreciation with some coffee notes. And then we also, you know those camp videos where they'll have like everyone gathered and they'll show you these videos for the rules. It's like they'll show two people hugging and they're like, hey, leave room for Jesus. We did stuff like that for the school rules. Like don't leave your backpacks in the halls or no PDA.
So we're showing that next year during grandpa for all grades. And then, um, on the top of that, the new student council members had a meeting on the 17th to build on the 2024 upcoming button answering council here for next year and to get to know each other and new members. So we added on new officers and the new president for next year, Sophia Rule. Um, the new vice president is me, um, and your secretary will be Sky Hallston, the treasurer will be Tegan Dupont, and the reporter will be Ellie Olson, and while the committee's coordinator will be Lexie Matt. I can only share this short overview.
Suppose this is your last report until September, last one for Christian, for sure.
Darn.
This is your first presentation?
Yep.
It's got a little bit of a good job.
I got money that says no.
Any questions? Well, thanks for the, yeah, thanks guys. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment about, uh, the new officers. So a purchase order came across my desk today. They're purchased on behalf of the student council, signed by Tegan Dupont.
So she's writing purchase orders now.
Double gentleman.
Uh, next order of business, uh, elementary stu- student leaders. You're up.
My name is Adeline Jackson.
My name is Daisy Peter. I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Sophie Sander.
My name is Lily Alexis. I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Helen Bosser. I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Avery Hatt. I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Kate and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Lydia Sater and I'm in fourth grade. I'm not just saying.
So, um, we did, at the end of the year, we did a cereal drive because the food shelf was in need of cereal. So we went to our buddy rooms and told them that we were doing a cereal drive. So then the Friday, we started bringing in boxes and then every morning at lunch, then we went to our buddy rooms and grabbed our boxes and then lined them up and charred them in the, um, lunchroom. And then at the end of the day, we announced two was in first and second and third place.
Seven hundred guys with each class. Uh, we collected a total of nine hundred and forty-seven boxes of cereal.
Our goal was to save a thousand, but we didn't quite get there, but we still got a lot.
And then we made, um, the domino line around school with all the, um, boxes of cereal.
Then after we loaded all the boxes onto the bus and brought it to the food shelf. Um, can you show the video as we saw?
Yes, thank you. Yes. Were you waiting on me? I'm sorry. Is there only Steve?
There's no sound until it gets to the videos.
Oh, okay.
You're good.
I need to make this larger. When I come home, Steve. Okay.
Um, we found these cards from, um, we have leftover cards from our last meeting that we would like to give to you. Question number one. Um, if you guys are letting us talk after a school where it's busy.
My favorite part of English student leader, definitely making this school happy, doing all of our different projects with the school and definitely helping out, um, this, the long division of the job.
My favorite part of things to leave in was probably watching the domino line. My favorite part was probably the character challenge course. My favorite part was seeing all the little kids so, and like there's like all the school activities.
My favorite part was like the challenge course because it was scary and then like on the best thing.
My favorite part was the hard character challenge.
Uh, my favorite part was probably the behind this part.
My favorite part was when we were getting around like treats and stuff during the winter and apple cider and stuff.
My favorite part is when you guys come here and share with us. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
All your, yeah, all your activities throughout the year that you just named off that you're favorites. I mean, geez, it doesn't seem like that long ago, but that was probably nine months ago. It was by quick. Guys got, did a lot of stuff this year, so nice work.
Thank you.
Just so this is too late or something. I like the thing. Miss Amanda for all of the work and all, all of our teachers and staff. So, takes a village.
Yep, I agree. Uh, moving on to six dot O. Thank you again.
Our finance reports, um, um, as, um, we report every month, uh, fund balance report. I look at that, um, again, uh, we're closing in on the last two months. This is through April thirtieth. Uh, every indication is that we will finish, um, strong to the end. Um, we, um, anticipate that our fund balance will, um, will stay right, right around where we began the year. Actually, uh, might grow a little bit. Um, one of the things that we did, I don't know if Dan or Don would remember when we closed outside purchase orders around April first, maybe?
Yeah, April for sure.
Yeah, April fifteenth. And really what we did there wasn't, wasn't a freeze or anything like that. We asked our staff to always submit, um, well, first of all, that we, um, just for, um, accounting purposes, so we get the bills, the invoices in for things that we ordered and get them paid before it first. Uh, it's important that we have a cutoff date, um, so that we're not ordering a ton of stuff here or may, you know, um, or into even June and then having to have that invoiced and paid by July one. But, um, we asked our staff to, to really take a look at, you know, remaining budgets and what you have left and, uh, really purchase things that you really need to finish the year. Uh, and there's some purchasing for the, for planning for next year, but, uh, um, I will say that our staff really responded well and, uh, there's going to be some, some unspent money in, in some of our line item budgets, um, with this practice and, uh, that has a potential maybe to grow our fund balance a little bit, but, uh, we, we're looking like we're coming in right, uh, as, uh, pretty darn close to what we expected and that's really a, hats off to Joan how she can, you know, maneuver twelve million dollars and, and come out as close as we do every year. So, um, um, that's, that's finishing like we expected and hoping that we can finish, um, uh, in that little bit of positive there. Um, expense revenue summary there again, uh, we're almost, uh, at that, well, April thirtieth is through ten months of the twelve month fiscal year and, and you can see, uh, the percentage of the expenses and the percentage of the revenues, um, where we're at, um. And again, that would tell the same story. So any questions about those two documents?
Based on this, it looks like we're anticipating a positive.
Yeah.
Ever so slightly food service problems.
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Um, again, and that's, um, um, you know, we, we, um, we're feeding more kids, so there are some expenses there, but our reimbursement, of course, is, is near a hundred percent on all of that. So, uh, with the free meals for our breakfast and lunch for all of our students. Uh, and then the bottom report is just again, um, really the only expenditure that we've had of any notice in the last few months has been, uh, we put some new, um, blinds in the superintendent's office, offices and, uh, um, uh, in that, in those offices. Uh, so we're at about sixty thousand dollars, um, as of April thirtieth left in that account. And we've talked about how we potentially will utilize that money, um, going forward in some of our facility planning. So those three reports and then there is action items on your six point four.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Silk. Uh, six dot four. So we've got some donations to recognize, uh, approve, uh, or not approve, excepting that we've got, uh, Collin Construction's, a donation to that that they link being Boston A-Rail or Snowmobile Club to physics trip. And then, uh, Team Industries to robotics, um.
I think we can do one motion to accept all of those. I guess I can.
I think so. Yeah, one motion to accept all.
With many things.
Also again.
Opened by Director Munter, segmented by Director Marcus to approve the donations. Look, thanks. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you to those organizations supporting the district. Uh, seven dot O reports, elementary council reports. Mr. Bushy?
Yeah, uh, item number one, uh, you can look at our enrollment. Uh, we went up three students since April. Uh, the two of the students had moved back. They were attending here and came back and then we had a new student move in. So, K through six, we're at three eleven and then, uh, total three K through six, that's three seventy-four. So good number to end the year at. Uh, item number two, we'll discuss during, uh, the, I'm sorry. That's a little further down, I guess, but item number two, MCA math, reading and science. We completed our testing. Uh, we'll have, we have preliminary results, but those cannot be public. Um, so I will be further gathering that data, um, and then sharing that with the admin. Uh, also our star three sixty reading and math concluded on May seventeenth. Um, but testing went really well, um, on the tech end of it. We had no issues, which is always a plus. Um, and, and the kids were resilient throughout the process that ends up being a lot of testing for about a month. Um, and so my hats off to the teachers, uh, obviously the students, um, for all their hard work during that testing season. Um, item number three, elementary band choir concert, uh, on May fourteenth. Uh, like to congratulate our choir, four through six, did an amazing job, um, and then our sixth grade band. Great to listen to, uh, they sounded very good. So big thank you all to Alyssa and Anders. They did a great job this year working with those kids. And with Alyssa, uh, being the veteran, uh, kind of working with Anders throughout the year and with the sound that, and the music that they brought out throughout the course there, it was, was very good. So thank you to those two. Uh, sixth grade class trip, uh, today. Actually, they're in the Twin Cities. So I don't know where they're at right now, but they, not, they're probably not on their way back. Yeah, they are. They're on their way back right now. Um, so we have left early this morning. Uh, they'll arrive around midnight tonight and then on May twenty-second, they go to Fargo um, for the day. Promotion, uh, will be tomorrow at ten thirty. We'll be promoting fifty-six graders into the high school. So we look forward to promotion and Alyssa, can you have you presenting on the promotion certificates? Item number five, just FYI for you guys, uh, uh, May twenty-third, end of the year awards program that will happen at nine AM. We'll have awards for attendance, student leaders, students of the month, accelerated reader, foster grandparents, writing awards, uh, and then some awards. Uh, for recognition for track and field day that was held. Uh, so many thank yous to, uh, Mr. Helber and Jay Fosler. That was a great day for the track and field day. Item number six, just an update on summer programs that we have going on at Monica St. Elementary School. We have Larry Academy, June fourth through June twenty-seventh. That will take place Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday from eight to noon. And our, uh, there's a summer program that we have. It used to be run, excuse me, through twenty-first century. Uh, now it's just no longer twenty-first century. So it's just our summer program. And that will run June third through June twenty-seventh, Monday through Thursday, eight to twelve. Uh, there'll be breakfast and lunch, uh, served at the elementary, not just for summer programs, but for anyone who would like to school age kid that would like to come and eat breakfast and have lunch. And then I have our students of the month, uh, in kindergarten, Bruce Marcus, Ellie Quincammer, first grade, Juliana Piacoff and Lucas Affelt and Andrew Walker, second grade, Lindsay Lysing, Colin Olson, Melanie Lissav, third grade, Grant Randolph, Harper Hand, Ellie Davis, fourth grade, Kelby Marcus, Addison Quincammer, fifth grade, McMeas and Stanley and Aaron Gouley, and then sixth grade, Bradley Lansford and Kate and the Crozier. Um, so I'd like to congratulate those students for, actually, I should say for the month of April, not May. Sorry. We haven't announced our meeting yet. So. That one item we'll talk about later is our math curriculum and under education. Any questions?
Thanks, Mr. Bushy. Yeah. Uh, super, or excuse me, high school principal reports. I repeat.
You're right, Jackson.
Some days he can have it.
Uh, as far as our goal and there, you can see, uh, we're at two seventy-two finishing out the month of May. Uh, if you take a look throughout the course of the nine months, we've been pretty much consistent within that. Two seventy-two to two seventy-seven ballpark. So, um, prom was held on May fourth. I believe we had somewhere between forty-five and fifty couples attend grand march. Uh, and of course there was more students than that that attended the after prom party. Not everybody attends grand march. Um, want to thank our community for that support, uh, that after prom party portion of it. And of course also want to thank James and Stace Manneke for all their hard work and, and, uh, putting together prom. Uh, there's countless hours between the two of them. Um, sixth grader took a tour of the high school, uh, with the help, and I have a mistake in my report, it was the National Honor Society, not student council. Um, but again, with the help of National Honor Society, so on May sixth, and so our senior high students, uh, obviously the smaller groups of those elementary students around the building introduced to the staff, uh, kind of gave them the lay of the land, things like that. Uh, we celebrated teacher appreciation week, May sixth through the tenth, and so throughout the course of the week, we just had variety of snacks and things of such, uh, for, for staff. Just wanted, uh, again, say that I really feel that we have a, a wonderful staff up here at the high school. Uh, there's a lot of great camaraderie, a lot of hard work and effort that's been put forth by each and every one of them. Uh, our annual scholarship celebration was held on May tenth. Uh, as you can see, there was a total of forty-seven thousand dollars distributed just on that day alone. But when, uh, Mrs. Hanson calculates, um, what she is informed of, when it refers to students getting their scholarships from colleges and such, uh, our students that are going on to college grant a total of two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in scholarship. Says a lot about our students. Um, I've met with the senior class, uh, as of last week, just to kind of give them a reminder of what their last week looks like, some of the things that they need to tend to. Uh, so tomorrow, of course, is their last day in the building and so they are to report no later than nine o'clock. Uh, they clean out their lockers, make sure that all their books are back where they need to be, computers, things of such. Uh, from there, we'll travel over to the elementary. They'll do their last final walk through the elementary building. Come back here, uh, Coffields will be here for individual and group photo, like starting at about ten thirty. And then at about eleven thirty, we have, uh, dinner with the staff. And then approximately twelve thirty, we'll get started with practice, graduation. And that could take anywhere from half hour to an hour, depending on how smoothly everything goes. And then they are done for the week until Friday. Um, also indicated here, students in grades seven through twelve have their last day of school on Thursday. We are out early at noon. And then, of course, graduation is set for Friday at seven PM. Couple of other things I want to make mention of, uh, that are not necessarily in my report. Just the fact that, again, coming off of Dan's hotels here with, uh, Mary and Anders with our music department up here at the high school and a great job they did this year. Uh, of course, they had their final spring concert. I think it was like on the seventh of May. Uh, great turnout, great performance. Uh, I think it's very evident as to, um, how that program overall has ramped up in the last year. And then lastly, um, just want to make mention that Menomen High School has donated their choir grounds to the Boston High School. Uh, Menomen has paired, sounds like in all programs with Waban, and so they're no longer, uh, sporting those colors and they gave them to us. So I know Mary's very excited about that because in all of her years, she has said that she's never had choir grounds for kids. So, uh, thanks to Menomen High School for that.
No, that's very nice of them. Absolutely. Uh, any questions for Mr. Denarsky? Thank you for that report. Superintendent, so yes, uh, I just, I officially and, and formally want to, uh, recognize our two student groups, our
senior high student council, our, uh, elementary student leaders. Uh, one for their attendance at our monthly meetings, two for all the things they do, uh, three to the leadership of that. Thank you. Um, and, um, they're just, they're just a great representative, representation of, of what the good things are we doing in our district. So hats off to them and thank you to them. Uh, I had the good fortune of, um, attending part of the sixth grade fishing outing this past week, uh, over at Maple Lake, uh, total of sixty-seven fish were caught by our kids over there this day, standing in the rain, uh, catching fish, uh, I don't know, bass that was that big somebody caught and, uh, one kid caught six fish himself. And, uh, thank you to our, uh, local sportsman's club, Boston Sportsman Club. Uh, they purchased a rod reel and, uh, little tackle box full of, uh, jigs, et cetera, uh, for each of our students and, uh, was a great success, uh, a great successful day. And, um, our two sixth grade teachers, Mr. Wolf and, uh, Mr. Holger, um, believe that it will be the annual event from here on out. So, uh, thanks to Sportsman's Club and congratulations for the idea to our sixth grade teachers and, and our kids just behaved wonderfully and had a fall. Uh, the administrative team continues to meet on a fairly regular basis. Uh, we're not meeting this week. Uh, the administrative team continues to meet on a fairly regular basis. Uh, we're not meeting this week, uh, due to obviously a busy week for everyone involved. But, uh, um, just continue to talk about planning for the district into the future. And, uh, a whole host of different things, not only facilities, but, um, programming, um, staffing, a whole bunch of things. Um, we have really good discussions and who sits in that meeting are Dan and Don, our two principals, Steve, our tech director. And Ryan, our activity director, and myself, and, uh, uh, it's just, it's a good time for us to catch up with each other and what's going on in our. Uh, individual, um, uh, lives at school and our responsibilities at school, but also to look from a, um, a broader view of. Of where we want to see the district and what we think we, uh, need to get accomplished in the district going forward. Uh, Luma, as you know, helps us with our mental health services for the district. We will continue with them next year. Uh, there's some staffing issues that they're having, just like everybody else is having. Uh, we may, um, have to cut back a little bit about what they can provide us, but, uh, we will have some, um, presence of Luma in our building next year. Uh, the purchase of the, uh, uh, church across the street is still progressing. Uh, expected to close late June, no hiccups to report at this point in time. Uh, the new lunchroom tables at Mogulson that you gave approval for, uh, last meeting or the meeting prior, I'm not, not remembering exactly what meeting that was. Should arrive, uh, mid, early to midsummer and be in place for the start of next school year. Um, June one, which is coming up, uh, just a week from this coming Saturday, good one already. Uh, board work session, seven AM. Um, hats off to, uh, to James and his custodial team, uh, in their preparation for not only graduation. And, and I want to acknowledge him, uh, the work they did over at Mogulson today, um, in preparation, or at multiple days. In preparation for the sixth grade promotion, um, we believe, believe we'll be standing call for those two events. Alan Dahl, our transportation director, continues to grow, um, met with him a few times here recently. Uh, he's got ideas. He's, uh, uh, prepping, uh, for bus certification in June, and, uh, he's just really enthused and, and working hard in this new role. Uh, I too would echo our music department. Uh, we've made some really great strides these, um, this last year and, um, it's very noticeable. And, uh, um, we're hearing it not only from those of us within the system, but those, uh, our public outside of the system. And then lastly, I too would like to acknowledge our staff, um, all they do and how they do it. Um, it's not what they do always, um, but, uh, it's in addition to what they do, it's how they do it and how they support kids. Um, uh, we're gonna have a very nice, successful year to reflect on here. Uh, we have a great school district made up of great students with a great staff. Um, I know that that's not everywhere and, um, we take that for granted sometimes and we shouldn't pinch ourselves because we're pretty darn lucky around here. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Self. Uh, we'll move on to eight dot old personnel. So we've got eight dot one. Proved not proved hire of Sidney Tadman as speech language pathologist for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Uh, just a little background on that, um, Ms. Tadman, uh, was a student teacher in our speech department under. Um, uh, Ms. Weiner over here, uh, throughout the year, uh, Mr. Bushy and Mr., um. Denarsky and a few staff members, um, interviewed this candidate. Um, on completion of that interview, uh, Ms. Tadman stopped in my office, I had chats with her. And it was the unanimous recommendation from that group that we make an offer to her, uh, we have, and she has accepted. And she will begin, uh, with the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Entertaining a motion for eight dot one?
Motion by Director Munter, seconded by Director Marcus to approve the hire of Sidney Tadman as speech language pathologist. For the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Any further discussion? Masters plus. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Excuse me. Uh, eight dot two, approved, not approved, retirement of Don Bly as a teacher as of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, and your packet is a letter from, uh, Don, um, and, um, she speaks very highly of her time. Associated with Boston Public Schools. You know that she's been on a leave of absence for five years. And, um, uh, this will now conclude that as well. And, um, uh, we want to thank her for her years of service as well to the district. Um, and, uh, wish her well in her formal retirement. I said to her, she had an opportunity to have a little coffee and goodies. At both buildings here a week ago maybe, or ten days ago. And, uh, I said, now you, now you get to officially retire. Uh, because obviously she did not come back after her, uh, leave of absence, but this will be official retirement, uh, for her. And, uh, she'll be on her way to, uh, retirement.
Move to a pro, uh, retirement announcement, Tom Bly. Motion by Director Bossler, seconded by Director Munter to approve the retirement of Don Bly. This teacher has a May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight dot three, approved, not approved resignation of Sarah Phelps as elementary school special education teacher as of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Sarah's been with us for two, three years maybe, uh, actually it's, uh, four. Four year.
Yep.
Um, she has submitted a resignation and, and, uh, happy to report that she's actually secured a job in the Ferguson Falls School District. And so she'll be leaving our area and heading to Ferguson Falls, but the recommendation would be to accept that resignation.
Resignation of Sarah Phelps.
Second.
Motion Director Dupong, seconded by Director Bossler to approve the resignation of Sarah Phelps as elementary school special education teacher. As of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, eight dot four, approved, not approved, retirement of Denise Koyer as high school custodian as of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, Denise has been in our district for over twenty years, I understand, um, and, uh, she submitted her retirement letter to us. It's in your packet. That's a, uh, she, it was April thirtieth, her last day was last. Uh, coffee and cake and assorted goodies were, uh, part of her final day here. Um, she, um, um, has indicated that, uh, she wants to move on to other things, as you can read in her letter. Uh, the recommendation from administration would be to accept the retirement, but not as completely stated in the retirement letter. Where she requests, um, the district pay single health insurance premium, um, and life insurance premium, uh, through June of twenty twenty-five. That would not be the administrative recommendation. It would be to accept her resignation and, uh, provide health, uh, benefits. Through the end of the fiscal year, which is June thirtieth. Um, and then obviously she's entitled to any severance that she's earned, uh, under the working agreement that we have.
We have paid this in the past.
Say that again.
We have paid insurance in the past.
Yep. To stop.
Reason for not paying a year?
Um, I, I just don't know how that we can sustain paying our retirees for another year of insurance, um, going forward. I don't believe that that's money, um, that the district, uh, should incur.
Denise reached out to me. Um, she told me about the process. With the process that went through, I think we probably owe her the insurance. I think as a district, we handled that well. There should never be intimidation in that process. And.
Well, I.
Three people, three administrators, three people of authority discussing one person, there's intimidation there.
I'll, I'll respectfully disagree with that, Mr. Ware. Completely disagree with that. Um, there's, there's much more. There's much more than what you're hearing, so, um.
I have no doubt there's two sides to that story.
Yeah, so I don't know what, I don't know what we're, we're discussing here, and I don't know that it's appropriate to discuss it in this one.
I understand where you're coming from. If you say it's a poor decision at that point, your recommendation is there, but I do definitely stand by my comment.
So the question on the table is to approve or not approve retirement of Denise Koyer as high school custodian as of May fifteenth?
With all, all earned severance under our working agreement paper, as well as her life insurance, or excuse me. Her, uh, health insurance and life insurance through the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four.
Will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the retirement of Denise Koyer as high school custodian. So, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
This all can include retirement and. Insurance. As requested. I find that in motion, then. Yeah, the retirement.
Well, the, the administrative recommendation is to accept the retirement. Um, and the, the terms of that acceptance would be to pay her severance that she's earned. Uh, through our master, through our working agreement. Um, and April will compute that and pay that accordingly. Believe it's paid in three or four installments. For, uh, as well as, um, continue her health insurance through the rest of this month. Uh, with her retirement on May fifteenth. Her health, uh, uh, insurance will be paid through the rest of May and through the month of June, concluding on June thirtieth of two twenty, two thousand twenty-four. Which coincides with the end of our school year.
Um. What she's asking for.
She's asking it for, for another year beyond that.
Um, I make a motion to this request. For the approval of the retirement and. District to pay single health insurance premium through the district. My health, life insurance premium with colonial life through June twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Your, your motion is to hear what she requested.
Yeah.
It's addressed in the staff, support staff, and. This situation, yeah.
Um, for health insurance, it's usually covered till the end of the month that they are employed. But to carry it on, there's something in there.
At what point do we start setting precedence that this, what we do could end up?
I hear what you're saying.
We could end up in the hurt bay real quick.
We could, but it's a negotiated thing, you know, everybody has a right to negotiate what they want to be. You know, I, I hear what you're saying about precedent. But, you know, because we have done it for several people already.
Circumstances were different when you did, did with some teachers, was part of a, an opportunity to, um, give early retirement for some teaching staff. The way I understand, this way it's been shared with me. We did it for one employee a year ago. Um, and quite honestly, I, I, I don't know that the board fully understood what they did at the time because it happened so quickly in the meeting. That it got approved, um. I just think that it's precedent setting hugely and, and we're going to pick and choose. That we want to give it to this employee or not want to give it to this employee. We're gonna give it to this employee because they talked to someone that, um. Or created a situation. Um, I don't support it, but you guys make the decision. I think it's an awful road to go down and it ties us to some finances that, um. I, I don't know how you say no down the road to anybody, because now you're passing judgment on, I, I, I like this person, I don't like this person. I wholeheartedly disagree with the motion.
So we got a motion and a second. Um, what further discussion do we have?
I'm just concerned that that's a precedent.
I worry about that.
Future, future employee retirements down the road, which we could have. The senior staff we have, that, that could be a significant. Fact and should probably look at addressing it in more depth in that and in the, uh, the support staff agreement.
Um, I think it's, it is addressed in your support staff. It ends, you retired ends. It's a thirteen thousand dollar, uh, cost. To extend it a year. For lack of addressing it, it is addressed. Uh, we accept a retirement, there's an effective date. Your time with the district is now concluded. This doesn't mean you're a good employee, bad employee, it's just, it's the choice that's been made.
Further comments?
I just agree with Dean, I worry that this is. Continue to rear its head down the road and we're gonna be in a position where we're playing favorites. It's a difficult position.
I don't think it has anything to do with playing.
No, I mean, if you're saying yes and saying.
From a, a financial liability perspective. Um, with this, with this request, I'm gonna ask for a roll call. Second name. Director Dean.
No.
Munter.
I would say, I don't know, I'm mad. I totally get it both ways, you know, that we did it, but the financial part too, and if it's in the handbook. I guess. Perhaps I know it's addressed there.
So go, no more. Uh, Director Ware.
Yes.
Director Bossler.
No.
Director Marcus.
No.
Director Kristen. Yes. Uh, the nose. Or two. Motion does not pass. Any further discussion?
We'll be stopped to, therefore, we'll be stopped to accept the resignation and the retirement in some capacity.
Wasn't that the motion with or without? To accept the resignation with or without, basically, with the benefits and that was.
Not failed.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we do not always, we have not addressed, so we have the flutter of retirement. That needs to be addressed. Will we accept the retirement notice by Denise Koyer?
I'll make a motion to accept the retirement of Denise Koyer without. Paying an additional year of health benefits for the colonial life insurance, uh, and granting the severance package as called out in the. Support staff agreement.
Can I, and, and, and through the month, through the June thirtieth?
Correct, yeah, including health. Correct, yeah, including health insurance through June thirtieth, yeah.
Second. Motion by Director Dupong, second by Director Vosler. I think you should roll call that. Um, to approve the retirement of Denise Koyer. Um, without paying the health insurance for the rest of the year, um, covering through the end of June, June thirtieth, current period, yeah. Further discussion? Okay, and we'll go with the roll call vote here as well. Uh, Director Dupong.
Yes.
Director Munter.
Yeah.
Director Ware.
No.
Director Vosler.
Yes.
Director Marcus.
Yes.
Director Kristen, yes. It does five, approve, not approve posting for special education teacher.
As a result of our resignation, um, of Sarah Phelps, um, we do need to replace that position. Uh, so we would ask for the, uh, ability to post for a special education teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Want to approve in the special education teacher?
I'll second that. Any discussion? Motion by Director Munter, second by Director Kristen, um, to approve the posting for special education teacher. Those are signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, nine dot O educational discussion math curriculum.
Uh, I asked Dan to, uh, that we remove it from his, um, report. Um, Scott made a comment a couple of months ago that uh, we don't have much under educational ever in our educational system, so just jokingly there. But, um, we have progressed through our, um, our, um, sampling of math curriculums and Dan would report on what decisions have been made in our moving forward.
Yeah, just a, a, a quick history of with our math curriculum. We started out in, in the fall with a pilot in reveal math. Um, and after three to four months, we figured out that it wasn't a good fit for us. Uh, and that was for grades three and four. Um, and they continued that pilot, but then we started looking at another vendor. Um, and then at that point, we had sent, uh, a handful of teachers to Bemidji to, uh, go and view and meet with teachers, uh, in, in Bemidji. And the math curriculum there was big ideas and the title of the curriculum was math and you, uh, had a positive response from that visit, uh, met with the math curriculum team. Um, and it was unanimous that we go with, uh, big ideas math and you, uh, starting in twenty twenty-four school year. So we're in the process of a, uh, more ordered curriculum through, uh, big ideas, um, and we'll expect that sometime in Ju- in July. And then at that point, then we'll, uh, organize some training. Um, we're probably looking at the beginning of August. Um, and that's up for the staff on, on Friday, remember staff meeting, trying to coordinate a date where we can get some, uh, training with that. All of our teachers currently have a sample copy of the teacher's edition and they've had those for a few months. Um, hard to go through that obviously, but, uh, it is in our hands right now. Um, but the whole process frustrating at times, uh, but we were diligent and, uh, feel good with our selection. We've used divisions math for, I think, eleven years, so it, it was time to update our math. So I'd like to thank all those that, uh, uh, on the math curriculum committee, uh, those teachers that visited and did the due diligence of, uh, going through the process. I can answer any questions if any of you have any questions. Thirty-seven thousand for seven years.
Thirty, per year or full set?
Full set. And, 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 yeah, and that includes its consumables, which is like a student, uh, workbook.
Is there a textbook with it or is it all?
It, no, it's just.
Yeah, that's fine.
So there's change, yeah. There is a digital, uh, portion of it, but we decided against that. Um, so it's the teacher's edition and then the consumables. And then you have obviously support, um, through that quote that you have to give pay licensing fee every year or anything, or it's? No, it's just an annual review or renewal. And it's basically just the consumables. Ends up being what about fifty-five hundred dollars a year?
Yeah.
And then we're also looking at a, uh, that's considerably cheaper than what they had in the past, but we're looking at a, not a supplement, but a, uh, a platform, it's called iExcel. Um, to help assist us, you know, with math and so.
Any of our teachers want to comment on that process or any? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, you could certainly decline.
I have one of the teachers that piloted the current curriculum.
Right.
Um, so I think it's a good choice.
Good.
Moving forward.
What is the process?
Typically, it's not this hard. Uh, there are so many, there are so many hurdles or roadblocks that came up. We liked a couple of the curriculums, but then they were not being, um, so that kind of threw us through a curve ball.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that kind of made you frustrated, but, uh.
Persevere, yeah. All things will work on that.
There's many chances of it's going away, like some of those you said disappeared in three years.
There's always that chance. There's always that chance.
There was that fact, right?
It's changing all the time. Uh, yeah. Yeah, if, if that does come up, then we just don't. We'll go, we're new. We can add, we can add that anytime.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, moving on to ten dot O operational, so we got ten dot one, approve, not approve, updated school meals policy.
So in your packet is the, uh, updated version, um, so there's statute and, and then there's policy here. And, um, so we had to make sure, um, that we, we, we submitted this, um, into, um, um, to our food service provider to the state. Uh, and, um, so, uh, because it's a part of law, it doesn't need a first or second reading, it can be adopted on the first reading. And so Stacy Manicki, uh, combed through, uh, her current policy and, um, um, and then the statute. And, um, uh, basically, the, what the statute, the change in the statute that's happened most recently is the, um, idea that, um, um, it's lunch shaming is the category of, you don't take trains away from kids, you don't deny them. Every kid is entitled to a hot meal every day, uh, regardless of their situation. Now, free, free meals for everyone, the, um, the policy really is, is kind of set aside because everybody's getting it no matter what. Um, but if we go back to a state where we charge for meals, our policy would be current with, um, with, uh, the statute that speaks to this. Um, and then our, our policy that's been adopted, uh, in previous years, um, um, s- speaks to, um, um, negative balance and those types of things. Um, I can tell you that we've, um, retired all those. We've collected some, we've, but we've nonetheless, we've retired all those past negative balances. And, um, basically. Pretty clear now. Yeah. So we're just looking for, uh, approval of the school meals policy, uh, so that we can submit it to the state that it's been waterproofed.
Any further discussion? Do you entertain a motion?
No, I'm trying to approve our data school.
Motion by Director Munter, second by Director Dupong to approve the updated school meals policy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. End up two, approve, not approve, twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. Final revision.
Right. Um, as you know, uh, in years, in many years past, um, the day of this section speech tournament, which is held in Fossett on an annual basis, is a shortened day for our students, uh, staffs to, um, put in the full day, but students go uh, uh, on an early out schedule, I think principles, I'm asking, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, this, and, and so we built a calendar, um, a- around that section speech date, which has always been on a Thursday. Section speech got moved to Tuesday, May fif- or, uh, April fifteenth next year. So to adjust our calendar to coincide with that, we're asking for this adjustment. So what used to be, um, going to be April seventeenth as the, what was approved in an, an initial calendar, um, as an early out date, now that becomes April fifteenth. Everything else about the calendar that was prior approved remains the same. And in your, in your packet is the, the new date on your calendar. Go recommendation just to approve that, uh, to coincide with the speech term.
Move to approve the updated calendar.
Second.
Uh, motion by Director Vosler, second by Director Marcus to approve the updated twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, school calendar. Further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Proved not, or, excuse me, ten dot three, approve, not approve. Minnesota High School League Resolution.
Yeah, on an annual basis, we have to become members of the high school league, um, and, um, the, uh, uh, resolution is in your packet. It requires signature by, uh, school officials as well as our, uh, uh, clerk, excuse me, and Allison has signed that and submitted that. And I just got back notice here late today that it's been accepted by the league. We have to spend the minutes to, uh, support the approval, correct, any approval? Yep. Um, that allows us to register for the different sports that we choose um, to register for or the, um, different activities, our finance activities as well. So this is an annual thing, it's actually, um, typically it's a, it's a June or July approval, but, uh, we got it ready earlier and we're going to get it on the way tonight if, if so approved.
And the high school league increased their fees?
They actually have reduced their fees significantly for next year because of, uh, uh, five months of the, oh, some, some superintendents, you know, it was raised significantly after COVID. So the league is, is, um, going, selling that themselves that they're giving back to the districts and some cynical superintendents saying, you're just getting us back to where we were. But it's really where we are.
I was wondering if that went back down.
No, it's not like it went way down from that, but it was down from where it spiked.
I make a motion to approve. And so I have to be on the decision.
Yeah, also can, um, uh, motion by Director Munter, second by Director Kristen to approve the Minnesota High School League, uh, resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, ten dot four, approve, not approve, advertised sale of old bus.
Part of, um, my, our, part of our work with Alan here getting off the ground, um, I asked him to put together a, a detailed, uh, audit of our, our fleet, bus fleet. And, um, should we be getting rid of some buses and do we need to buy buses? And, um, he's identified two buses that, uh, no longer service, or excuse me, no longer have used to us. So we would like to advertise those for sale. We also, depending on how we move forward with, um, ten point five, um, potentially they could serve as a, as a trade item if we were to purchase a new bus. Uh, but at this point in time, we would like the ability to basically unload two buses, either via sale or trade. We will advertise them for sale. Um, that does not commit us to accepting any bid, but, um, uh, there are two that we want to get off our, our books.
Which buses? Uh, which buses are they?
A thirteen and B thirteen, if that means anything.
Big ones? Out of the bigger ones?
I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't know the capacity of them.
I think one of them once wasn't in our meeting to say that.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
One was the bigger one.
A thirteen is the bigger.
So they're used to run by all of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they, so they're running buses?
Yeah, they're, they're work, working buses, yeah.
How are we going to advertise, we're just going to follow the same norm with this?
Well, last time we, we put it in the paper, you know, as a bid and, um, uh, but we also putting the word out to, um, it's interesting, it, it's almost like they knew, know we have a new bus, our transportation director, because he's been solicited by a number of bus people and bus companies. Uh, so, uh, we're sharing with them that we have these buses potentially to sell, trade. Uh, you know, last time we did advertise one, we did get a local gift and we did sell that.
And that bus was not running.
That bus was not running, correct.
I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, I realize a bus is only worth ten, um, dollars, maybe put it back to service someplace else. But I'm wondering if we're, if there's another way to put that out for advertising, you know, I mean, just to draw more interest to it. It's still only worth X amount of dollars.
I don't know, they're like selling yellow book for buses.
I don't know. I didn't know, I, I don't know how you.
I mean, I, I couldn't tell you, I mean, again, remotely say with the value of the used buses.
And what are the, what's involved, you know, and it beat up their differences.
Um, I think those are all things we can explore, and I think Alan is, is ready and willing to explore some of those things. We just want to make sure that we don't commit a bus to sell that we don't have authority to sell.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there like KBIT or something like that, or is that?
I don't.
You know, or something like, I don't know.
Yeah, I just.
Just to get it in front of more people, I guess.
Facebook Marketplace.
There you go. I guess it's going to be the same thing we always do.
Yeah, I don't know.
Did they have a bid on the, like all the stuff they're trying to get rid of through the school report with the third aid in there?
I think we could probably, and I'm looking at April and I say this. Can we, in, in the, in, if, if we advertise, can we, uh, have a minimum bid?
We can, but are we creating more rights for ourselves?
Yeah.
I mean, let's face it, we basically rent those buses off at the turn of January. But you have great, so like you said, purchase two of the other options.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the sale. And this is two buses only for sale?
Two, two buses, yeah. Yeah.
Motion by Director Ware, second by Director Dupong to advertise the, for sale, the two, two buses. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion is approved.
And, and not really as a result of ten point four that we're getting rid of two, so we better go get some. Um, we continually want to update our fleet. Um, and, um, we chose not to purchase a bus this year and we did not bring a request forward. Um, we are bringing a request forward for next year to just keep our fleet current. Um, and, um, I asked Alan, um, about that and, uh, the desire, he believed that we, that, uh, putting one more into the plate, a newer bus would be, um, would be something we should be doing. So we're asking for, call for bids for the purchase of a bus as well.
Why are we putting capacity on that size?
Yeah, and that's a good question. Um, we're looking for a big one, yeah. And, um, we've talked about that. They call them a pusher, I call them a snub nose. Uh, the district had one years ago, those are the ones that have eighty-four capacity, which that's three persons to a seat, but that's the largest that is on the market right now. Uh, we're going to try to explore that and look for that. Um, uh, we've had a couple of inquiries, um, to, um, some companies that, uh, that, um, provide those. Uh, they come at a little more cost, uh, but we're having some programs right now that we need that capacity. So, um, that was what we'd be looking at. So, um, that was what we'd be looking at.
Oh, hard to figure.
One thirty?
Probably one forty maybe? Yep. And we wouldn't necessarily buy a new one if we could find one, but we're not really interested in buying one that has, you know, a hundred thousand miles on it already, cause, um.
I don't know if they have any of, any of the pushers available, but a lot of districts down in the cities actually have these buses.
Yeah.
So I know we've looked at some in the past, haven't we, leagues returns, where you get relatively low miles per, you know, it's a year or two old and you still, there's a life, life left in it, yeah.
You guys went through this in transportation community and some of this discussion, so your recommendation has just been shot in the wrong.
Yeah.
Cause like you said, you know, there's a bunch of options. Probably as soon as you say how you're getting them all this, the way you go before passes here.
Yeah, Mr. Doll, he had, he had some great, great thought stream in transportation, uh, his, what's that? The last one we bought was the one we found, we failed at the school board.
You know, we did a lot of handicap ones here. But the one prior to that was, um, Sue phone, that was school board association.
Uh, any further discussion? Is it preference gas versus diesel?
Diesel.
For sure. Don't we still have that gas, but that gas?
We don't have a good pusher anymore.
That one from Thea, remember that one?
Uh, we must have gotten rid of it because we don't have that in the fleet anymore.
Sounds gonna be athletic plus.
Yeah, we have a different, what we call activity, main activity bus right now. It's not a pusher.
Motion to approve a call for bids for purchase of a bus.
Second.
Motion by Director Ware, second by Director Vassler to approve call for bids for purchase of bus, excuse me. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. And procedurally there, we bring it back to you, obviously before we purchase a bus.
So this is just a call for a bit, yeah. On that same notion, uh, we have the need. So we use our Suburbans for a variety of reasons. We use them for curricular purposes, meaning during the school day, we use them outside of the school day, obviously for activities. Um, we use them for transporting some of our special ed people, uh, students, um, and we currently have two Suburbans and we have one van, um, that we, um, can put out and, uh, carry students with. Um, we get taxed sometimes, uh, and there's hotspots throughout the year. The spring season, of course, is a hotspot because some of our spring activities, um, require or can, can use a Suburban to transport students. Um, but sometimes we get caught in trying to get that special ed student home at the end of the day, and yet getting that team on the road for an activity or that group of kids, uh, for, for, um, um, for their activity, you know, whatever that might be, at a after-school type thing, but leave before the end of the school day. Um, so we, we would like to, to again, look at, at the possibility of, of purchase of Suburban. Um, I did make just a few phone calls. The last one, if you recall, we bought from Thea. I just called over to Thea to say, what's, what's leave time on these? And it's out there. You know, it's not something we're gonna just go pick up the lot tomorrow, um, by any means. And so, um, I guess what we'd like to do is call for the bid of that, uh, knowing that it could be, it could be a ways out, it could be even a year out. And not that we necessarily will purchase it this year, but we want the ability to, um, get one in motion if we so, make that, if we make that decision. So in order to, to get it before you to purchase, we need to bid it out first. So that's kind of our thought process there. Um, we think we probably could get by through most of the next school year, but again, the, it, it, you know, a year from right now would be probably a time when would be, um, most needed for us.
So this would be an additional vehicle onto the three that we currently?
Right.
Are we able to haul students with the van?
Uh, with the van? Yes, we can haul students with the van. Oh, no, we have two, we have a, actually, we have a third Suburban right now that's old.
Been in there?
Yeah, that does not haul students. Yeah. But we got. Yeah, we have the white one that's about a year older.
Yeah.
And then that gray one that was maybe two years older, a year before that. And this would be to add to those three, or to those two.
How close is the van being?
Being retired, yeah, sooner than later.
Yeah. So did we, here again, we're gathering this was discussed in transportation.
Yeah.
Have we looked at alternatives to the Suburbans? I mean, I know in the past we have.
Well, it's interesting because Alan, there's a, um, product by, who did he got? I don't know if it's a Dodge product or not, but his previous employment has a couple of these enlarged vans, um, people movers or whatever that he said are, he's had nothing but problems with. Um, so there is not a, um, um, to, to our knowledge, there isn't a, uh, substitute for a Suburban right now that meets, um, the needs of the school district, I guess.
Well, the recommendations from committee is, uh, go this round. I'm gonna make a motion to, to call for bids for purchase of Suburban.
Uh, ten dot six, so you got motion by Director Ware, second by Director Munter to approve call for bids for purchase of Suburban. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So you're gonna lock in transportation about a third mini bus? That seems to be the, the bigger hangup, at least in the spring season.
Yeah.
They're hot commodities.
Yeah.
We have two that we operate right now.
Yeah, and oftentimes they're both, both on the road and three people that wish they had them on the road. A conversation to talk about.
Um, fair conversation. I'll bring that talent. Yep, absolutely.
Uh, ten dot seven, approved, not approved, call for bids for bus garage parking lot improvements.
Yeah, on the, on the bus, buses and, and that whole transportation department, um, I don't know if you've been by the bus garage, but there's frost boils in front of our main, um, our main garage that something needs to be done to that area. Yeah, we've had buses get stuck literally right there, uh, going into the garage, going out of the garage. But the whole parking lot, um, uh, needs to be addressed and, and really, uh, we had some people look at it, um, it's a significant, um, it will be a significant undertaking, um, but really what we're looking to do is, what, what we'd be looking to do is get bids on kind of a three-phase project, um, and, and believe that we could do them in phases if we so choose. First phase would be to take basically that whole area, dig it down two feet, put some grain in it, come back with some, um, sub rock or whatever, and then class five to last, whatever. And bring it up to about that much short of where blacktop would go over it, but not suggesting blacktop the first year, letting that settle. And actually what, um, what people that we visit with, basically you probably bring, if you don't blacktop the first year, bring that class five right up to, to that level. It would drain, um, they would drain it to the south, I guess, towards that pond or that slew or whatever that over there. Um, and so it would all be sloped that direction. A second piece of it would be to, to look at the concrete that, that there's an apron on each of the garage doors, they're old, they're busted up, um, to look at and, and if in time we would come to lay tar there, uh, our blacktop there, um, you need to lay it up to some edge. Otherwise, because the, the inside of our bus garage is, is gravel as well. They're in pretty good shape. They're, they're fine. But creating that edge there for the blacktop to eventually come up to, uh, which would be an apron that runs in front of all the bus doors, um, as well as is inside the door above, I don't know, three feet or something when the door comes down. Something for the door to land on, to seal, um, and, um, tighten that, that whole piece up. And then the last phase would be at some point in time to come back and blacktop it all. One of the reasons not to blacktop it, um, if we go in this direction the first year is because part of the transportation committee as well was, uh, looking at a wash bay and, uh, potentially a, a shaft. And that would be built if, the proposed thought right now would be that it would be built to the south. Uh, so rather than driving, if, if their construction happened, rather than driving all the construction, um, vehicles over the blacktop, they drive it over the class five until that got built. Then come back and blacktop everything in front of the bus garages and the new addition, if there is such a new addition. It can exist without blacktop. That's not a problem. Um, but it really needs some attention to the class five that's there and this, what's below that in the drainage of that area. So we got some ballpark ideas from people and, I mean, it's, uh, it potentially could be, it's, uh, you know, a six-figure, um, job if you did it all at once, so we would like to call for bids on it, uh, because of that, maybe too. And then chair it as well or phase it as well, put phase one, two, three.
Would you any course handles in there?
I, I don't, I don't know.
So we're just, I'm just curious about this because, I mean, that's been that way as long as I can remember. And, I mean, I don't know if they should get rid of the bus, but it's a speculative estimation. And it's just, so we have that bid out there, what are we basing that on?
Yeah. We'll do some, yeah, we'll need to do some homework on that.
I don't have an engineer.
Well, I don't know how, how far we want to go on that, yeah.
We should at least maybe have a conversation with like what's up. At least some sort of.
Depending what's underneath that, we just.
Especially if you wanna try to drain it south, you might run into the issues there too, with your stormwater, water runoff. So would it be based off of those bids that come in? Those are the additional questions that we could ask to contractors that are bidding for it.
Well, because, yeah, just my thought on this, if we, if we just put this up for bids, just under general assumption, we're excavating two feet or whatever, we're filling it all in that stuff. And that's what our bids come in on. And then they start in on that project and we find out that holding crap is saving a lot of costs.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's, well, we can't change the agenda now tonight, but, um, uh, maybe we need to invest in some investigation of that site if we call for bids.
I think we could go ahead and make some type of motion that gives you leeway to pursue that option, you know, pursue it. You know, because this is just taking pins on it.
Well, it just says improvements, right? So, yeah, it's pretty open-ended, yeah.
I don't even know really do any motion on this, or is it something we can table or just definitely, definitely or whatever.
Yeah. Do some investigation, bring back some more information and then work it into a, a agenda item, yeah.
I think the agreement would be we needed to, so.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can work with that. That's, that's fine. And, uh, yeah, we just, we're making some good strides here and we, and, um, uh, we want to continue just to support that department and, um, yeah, it's, it's an area that has to be addressed at some point in time, sooner than later.
Um, so we're gonna table it?
I don't think we need a motion right now. I think I have direction from you, um, as to.
We should close this out though, this, I, um, okay, same point.
Um, so it could be a motion to table, um, motion to.
Oh, I need to take this, okay. Did you have the information at the next meeting?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that will support definitely till next week.
Okay, yeah.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Director Ware, um, second by Director Munter to table until next school, school dating, the approve call for bids for bus garage parking lot improvements. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries to table. Uh, ten dot eight, discussion cameras, spell systems and intercom. We probably should have moved that up so Steve didn't have to.
Sorry, Steve. So this is Steve and it's Don and it's Dan and it's, it's really all of us. It's really some of the discussion we've had at administrative meetings. Um, so I'll let Steve kind of lead it off, but Don, I know you have some comments around some of it as well and, and Dan as well, so we'll be there.
I'll just kind of go with what I hold as our. Camera system at elementary is in worse shape of the two, but it's working at the moment and both schools are working at the moment, but both schools also have cameras that are bad. Lot of areas there, blind spots more. Don's been in my office the last two weeks, but we have no view of them. We're hoping for them. And that's just because cameras are just starting to go out and things like that. But the, I mean, the biggest part is the bell system that we still haven't got bids backed on. Kind of, Garden Valley is bidding it, but they're submitting it. You know, having the pricing on that end. I just talked to James a couple of days ago and we still don't have any pricing on it. So I don't, I mean, I don't know which way we want to prioritize, I guess.
But I think tonight we're not really necessarily, um, well, we, we're calling it a discussion. I'm just bringing the board up to speed on, on some of the issues that we have in regard to our cameras, our bells, our intercom system. And it's kind of some anecdotal things as well that, um, put us in, put us at a disadvantage in, in how we, um, serve our students and, and our, and our, um, some, somewhat safety and security involved in that as well. So Don, what should we take?
Yeah, it's probably been at least a month since our bells have been consistently working, same thing with our intercom. Uh, and Steve recommended from Ron, but it all runs through our phone system, Director.
Well, phone system and it goes for a simple system, which is all fine there.
Yeah. And so even, uh, what was it, yeah, two weeks ago, when the elementary was almost an intensive lockdown because of the gas leak, we were almost going to be forced into a lockdown or evacuation as well. We had no intercom system. And it's the right way. It's like, oh, how do we even get that message out to safely get everybody out of the building? And so it's just been very hit and miss throughout the last, like you said, month, month and a half. I know Steve and, and James have spent hours trying to get it back up and, and get it to consistently work and then L.A. this morning, for example, bells rang at for the first bell and then you didn't hear a bell again rest of the day. So it's.
I mean, we did have a soft lockdown that, excuse me, we had to communicate by hand or by email.
Yeah, email and, yeah. I had to send, uh, I think shuttle around door to door, just to make sure where he was in that. I think we had, uh, safety dog was in on that particular day.
That, I, I mean, that bell and the intercom system has to be in place. And there's, it has to be. So whatever. I just fortunate, we're fortunate that we're not done yet, you know?
This is all being integrated into a system we already had. I mean, I remember, didn't we talk about this about a year ago? I had somebody come in from.
That, I was with the cameras and everything with the pricing I had. Well, just for the high school, which you mean, it's not a, we can't worry. Just for the high school is like two fifty, it's, it's all integrated. Right now our cameras at the high school, this high school are about a thirty and we really have no idea what this bell system is costing us. Definitely gonna do is price that kid as well.
What I'm hearing all this, it's not an option.
No, I think the bells are not an option myself. I mean, I think that's.
I don't work around the intercom.
You have bells, that's all tied together. Bells, intercom is all one system. It all tied to the phone system. And the phone system's fine, it's, it's gonna add into that system.
If, if the high school were to update bells and intercom, does that affect the system at the elementary?
It doesn't at this point because you have your own system there, but I mean, here's the same age, I'm assuming, so.
How old are these, Steve?
Well, I think they're from around ninety-seven, so. Not that that's terrible. Not that that's terrible, it just can't get priced for that. And then it's a, it's all within the symbols, the fire alarms and.
One of our concerns is, or one of the concerns that I voiced to Stephen, to administration is that we're not doing something that we would undo a year from now or two years from now, so we're trying to balance that, you know, the here and now of, we don't have an intercom. We've got to be able to speak to our people, um, in an emergency situation versus would we integrate something district-wide, I mean, right now we're in two different systems, but the new technology would allow us to be all together. But, but when is that, where is that, how much is that, that type of thing as well.
Are there technology grants out there to assist in something like this? For the safety, security standard?
Safety, security stuff, but I would get to. I don't know where to apply it. I know there's people that have applied for it. Even that would even call the cameras, so you're just applying a place to. Apply the rest of the grants. I mean, the, yeah, I mean, the cameras would be, I mean, they're, they're getting to a point where we need to replace them, but I just think the bells are, we just have.
I think we gotta get some numbers back, you know, on the bell system before we would take any action or bring any recommendation forward, um.
Well, there must be someplace we can reach out to get an idea of where these grants are. I mean, especially with the federal government state that are putting all this safety, security money out there.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's.
Well, there's got to be a school organization or something.
Yeah, we could each help it. We don't even have a recommendation to, I mean, we, even if it was an action night of today, we don't have a recommendation what we should be doing yet, but we just thought it was important to bring the board up to speed on some of the challenges we have. Um, and, and we'll continue to work. The good news is, you know, in two and a half days, students will be gone, which eases our anxiety a little bit. Um, but in three months, we're gonna be right back at it, so, you know, hopefully by the June board meeting, we'll have some better idea of what correction we might need to go, um, short term, long term. Um, and we'll just bring it back to you at that time, but again, it was more of an awareness tonight. To share. And Steve did include in the packet, um, these are just a couple of camera bids that, that, um, if we were to just do the cameras to the current system, uh, replacing the cameras at the elementary would cost about twenty grand and about thirty grand at high school. If we replace them at the elementary first, because they're the oldest, though.
They're, well, we just kind of hashed that, you know, it didn't go out in February, we gotta clash it.
It's working. Yeah. Um, but if we were to do that for the elementary, then there are some salvageable cameras there that could be backups here at the high school, and, and as they began to fail. But the two bits together would do cam, new cameras at old buildings.
And that, that's kind of summer pricing too.
Yeah.
Just so, you know, they, they don't want to look, uh, hurting the school any, so.
Yeah.
They don't do a lot of that kind of, it means.
I think we're doing LTFM meeting, and if, if you could hash some of this out in there, and especially give you some time for some other recommendations and.
Yeah, yeah, I see that, the bell, the biggest concern, I mean, cameras, yeah, we they leave it. It's, it's just like, I mean, they're, they're eight, nine years old now.
Well, if you're three months old, I'm time sensitive, I mean, don't have a lot of time to get them in by next year, right next school.
Well, I did, we got them, I don't bring this to you as a couple of months ago, but then the bell has been bothering us for a while, so.
Well, I have to.
At this discussion.
Yeah, any other questions? What I'm hearing is, uh, maybe pick up some additional discussions during a future LTFM meeting.
I think prioritizing, yeah.
Perfect, thank you, Steve. Uh, reports, we got a couple of reports before we get into meat and potatoes here. Uh, transportation, uh, committee meeting, so we had to dance to, uh, Alan.
Uh, three weeks ago, maybe?
Three, four weeks? Yeah, ten, five is here. So, yeah, first week on the job, he was doing observations, week two, he was doing some ride-alongs, I think week three, we, we met with him. Um, things, he's updating some, you know, tool purchases as well, a lot of the tools there were from the bus driver's own personal collection, so, um, I think there, you saw a lift that was purchased, um, toolbox purchase, uh, that sort of thing, so, um, Mr. Selk had alluded to, you know, down the road, looking at doing like the wash stalls. Um, something to think about too is cameras in the buses. Um, updating those, because I don't think many of them could work at this point. Um, but other things to think about too is just, you know, staffing efficiencies and routes. Um, and possible routing software too. Kind of summarize it. Um, one other, uh, report I have would be, um, I did notice that there was a, a screen print demo at six fifteen with Mr. McCall. Um, I should have saw it on the, on the agenda right at the top and sent out a communication to the board just for a reminder, but I was able to get a demonstration from Mr. McCall and, um, yeah, screen printing, yeah, there's a, there's an art to it. Um, he would, he was showing me, uh, a shirt that he's, uh, working with a student on creating, uh, the process that they utilize, um, how they, uh, take a screen and, and, uh, Photoshop. Um, I suppose you know all this stuff. Or you've seen it. Okay. But, yeah, it's, it's quite the process, it's new equipment, um, this year. Uh, I think he had said that there was some grant money that was able to purchase it, but they're just getting added to it this year, it's gonna be part of a um, some of his classes next year, um, where he's able to teach more, more kids that's, um, um, you know, the skills of that, that trade. It's something that he had gone to school for, so he has real, he's real passionate about it and understands how to use, utilize that equipment as well, so. Um, yeah.
That's a, a cool thing with that, with the primary thing, um, somebody from a different district that will name names, but they have the screen printing stuff and they're, they actually sell their school pools right from there. So that's, would be an idea for him to do later on. And they said it goes really good.
You're missing a part.
I know, I messaged Tom.
Right, too, yeah. I told you and I would go with the others.
Uh, any other reports before we get into board communication?
Just to reiterate, um, with Alan starting, um, I've heard from, well, personal experience, but also from other coaches that are just, that are driving buses that are just absolutely thrilled that he's there. Every day that we go to pick up buses, they're parked outside, full of gas, ready to go, there's no movement stuff around, it's just been super efficient since he started over there, it's been absolutely amazing to I have had the ability to, to reiterate, to reiterate that to him once, but, um, if anybody sees him.
He's very motivated.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's certified mechanic. Certified, we can do just by, you know.
Did mechanic for. He worked, he worked, um, in Missouri on electric trucks. I think so, yeah.
Agended, uh, amended agenda, uh, board communication, uh, Director Ware, you had brought that to.
Yeah, so I'll keep it quick, because I think it's a discussion that we probably should look at in our work session or probably the next work session, but it's that communication amongst the board. And, um, not picking on you with this guy, okay, it's just, one of the emails you sent out kind of directly to him is, you know, as a board, we're, we're seven members and we should have the same information to share. I realize at times as a chair, you're gonna get some information and eventually come out. But one that kind of jumped with me here was the, uh, the one with the Winnie Mac deal. And I realize, you know, preliminary stuff, things like that to reach out, you know. There's not, you know, as a board chair, you know, that's kind of the way that process is kind of going. The thing is with the email, the chain of communication. And when you start calling directors, and we've done it in the past, we've used it as a thing of just kind of putting information out there and if you have a feeling or how you want to go with it, a lot of times it's directed back to the superintendent, you know, at that point, so that, you know, from a board point. But later in, especially far down the email, there was, there was kind of a split from what you wrote in there about how directors felt on one way or the other. But later on, you kind of made a decision to, between you and Mr. Selk, super kind of self, to not do anything else with it, to just close it. That's a situation where you could argue that it, it's a violation of the meeting, because a decision was made at a point where you had input from other directors and stuff like that, even if it's not directly related, if it's stated anything on that, then we need to be careful about that. And, you know, what is acceptable, what's not acceptable, that's up to every work member, you know, that's a decision we need to talk about as a group. And what authority we want to give the chair going forward with that. And I think we've got to be real careful about how we move forward to meet in this situation. Because we have looked in the past about combining possibly things, you know, administration costs. A granted, the final status, you could have handled it immediately because your contract says, you know, I don't want anything to do with it. But we probably at some point, because there was other decisions made on it, it should have probably been with the personnel committee. Because that's kind of the purpose of the committee, to kind of give feedback back and forth with other directors when we can't make a recommendation. So I just, I said, we, we should probably discuss this other about, you know, the expectations or whatever director thinks and this kind of.
Yeah.
It would help.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that too. Yeah, and I don't, I didn't take that lightly, I mean, it's, it's, I, I overthink many things when, when it comes to. Um, and I thought, you know, what if, what if I just ask the question to Mr. Selk, would he be interested in it? He said, no, absolutely not. Um, what happens then? Does it just die? And I don't say, anybody, anybody else?
I guess it's like, personally, he hears where we are, you know, this is how we, how we afford with this, you know. And then you have other directors that are involved in it too, so.
The only thing that I would respond to that is then these committees, I mean, sometimes you have to meet on short notice and, and you've got to be committed to coming. Otherwise, we, we hold a meeting in and then people aren't there and, and then it, it's just handcuffs, you know? Um, this was, this was all a timing thing, um, and there wasn't much time. Now, I mean, if anything, we don't, we don't have to march to Winnie Mac's time by any means, but on the same token, um, it, it just becomes difficult sometimes, so if, if, if we need to call a committee meeting, you know, um, we can't banter back and forth for two days about what's best day time to meet. We've got to meet and we've got to have people there and then we've got to make a decision and go on.
In the past, we have done it, we had committee meetings very quick on some things, we've had board meetings and more in very short, most of them. You know, uh, you know, I, it's just one of those things that I think we need to discuss as a board on how we want to have personnel.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. Um, if, um, if the board would entertain putting that.